We're gonna go ahead and start. Ms. Count, you wanna do the invocation, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need an approval of the previous meeting minutes, February the sixth. Everybody's had an opportunity to read those.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Approval of the agenda. Everybody's had the opportunity to look at the agendas, anything you'd like to add or take away at this time?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, show a right hand. Public participation on agenda items.
Mr. DeBary, were you talking about something that was on the agenda or something separate?
I'm talking about something probably on the agenda.
Okay.
Come on up.
It's your turn.
No, I'm concerned about a couple of things. One of them is, I've come up here to find out when I'm supposed to vote. I've been voting for a long, long time, and I don't know, I've never voted for a president a year ahead of time. I don't know what's happening in this country. And, uh, it's just simple as that, and most people like myself have brought up, in the old days, they don't, they don't know what we're talking about on all this stuff, and I don't know. I just find out, I guess, when it comes time to vote, and vote one way or the other, but I just never seen nothing like this, how much coverage it's getting, and then they give away till you vote on it. I, I don't really understand why we're having, what we're having up to now. And then too, another thing I wanted to know was, who sets the time for these elections? As my understanding, if I'm correct, we're gonna have four elections this year. I understand the guy that resigned for this position here, but if they appoint him, appoint him till this tenure's out. We just have voted a guy in, now we gotta go around in a couple of months and vote him back in there, vote him out, or, or whatever. And it's costing the taxpayers of this county some money. I don't know how much, I don't know, if anybody can tell me how much the last election was. But when I, when I peered down at a vote, and I said, my God, oh, just like a regular thing, everybody got their place, uh, poll counters and, and all the equipment and everything else, and I said, for just this one person? And then do it again in about three months. Y'all may know when the next election is, I don't know on the same person now.
Next Tuesday is one election.
Next Tuesday?
The legislature sets the time of the elections. And there will be four this year, provided there's not a runoff. If there's a runoff, there'll be five. And it costs, the legislature's one that determines when the elections takes place, and the counties is the ones that pay for it. It costs us somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars for each election. So we would like to get by with less, too.
I don't know who's handling it through the state, if I did, I'd vote against them. Can, can I find out that information anymore?
Start with your local representative, and then with your senator, and with your local legislatures. They are the ones that determine when the election takes place.
Well, I mean, I don't have no authority, but I, I thought some of them-
On the primaries and the local elections, on the, the federal elections, the-
I think there's ways, could be some pressure put on these state people, forcing the county into doing, if they wanna have an election, let them pay for it.
I agree.
But they breaking this county with these, with elections coming up.
It's a strain.
And we could use that money for something else, in my opinion.
We agree.
Yeah. I guess that's about all I had to say, but I, I've been thinking about that, and, uh, wondering what to be done with it.
Okay. Anytime you've got a question, contact us, we'll answer it.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Item number one, Lisa Nash, Drug Court Coordinator.
I'm gonna start, Chairman.
And Judge Roper.
Um, I'm not gonna take much of your time, we're not gonna take much of your time, and the good news is, we're not here to ask you for anything. We are actually here to thank you. Inevitably, everybody in this room has been affected by substance abuse issues, whether it's yourself, or a family member, or a loved one. The Harrelson County Commission has always stepped up, and most, has recently stepped up and provided what we need to run our drug court program. You've always been willing to lend a helping hand, so we're simply here to thank you. Ms. Nash is gonna come up and give you some statistics really quickly, we've got a quick video, and then we're gonna get out of your hair, how about that? All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for letting us come. We just basically, like he said, we wanna be able to say thank you to you guys. Our circuit is one of the hardest hit in the state for opioid crisis, which resulted in the opioid settlement fund, which is a horrible thing to have to even admit, but it's a wonderful benefit to drug court in a whole. Since two thousand fifteen, our drug court has graduated over seventy-three participants. That is an economic benefit to the circuit at almost two million dollars. It's like a million eight hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, the funds that we were allocated went to our treatment and to our drug testing. Treatment helps us with our participants, it helps to provide them with tools that they're gonna need once they've finished drug court, to be able to be successful for the rest of their lives. The drug testing helps to ensure that they're being accountable, not to themselves, but to the program and their families. When they come into drug court, they have a minimum of twenty-four months in this program. During that time, they complete two hundred and seventy-eight hours of treatment. And that's a minimum number of hours of treatment. They have at least two hundred and thirty-six observed drug screens. And that's important because that creates, or it, it ensures that the participants that come in are not in any way creating a false sample or trying to cheat their drug screens. So we fully believe when we have a negative drug screen, that these participants are truly drug-free, which is amazing. They complete over two hundred and eight recovery support meetings. They do over fifty volunteer hours giving back to the community as a whole from what they've taken. It's just free hours that they're doing, whether it's at animal control, at a food bank, those kind of things. They also attend over forty-one court sessions, directly with Judge Roper, myself, and then our entire staffing team. They do all of that while working full-time jobs, a minimum of forty hours a week. And the result is they are reestablishing their families, they're becoming, they're, we're reducing recidivism, that's one of the biggest things, as far as like contributing to society. But they are becoming whole human beings, which is absolutely beautiful. So we do have three participants that are just gonna share just a very minimal amount, but we wanna play this video for you first, that's just saying thank you for all you've done for us.
Hi, my name's Steven, and Drug Court has taught me how to be a dad.
Hi, my name is Tyler, and Drug Court helped me, um, build my self-worth and restore my relationship with my daughter.
My name is Chance, um, and Drug Court has helped me to be clean and sober and become a better man.
Um, Tori, Drug Court gave me my life back when I gave up on myself and made me a better person and a mother.
Hello, I'm Keith, Drug Court has taught me accountability, how to set goals and budget my money.
My name is Clifford, Drug Court has taught me how to be a better father, and how to be honest, and how to be successful, and be on the right track.
Hey, my name is Mark, uh, been in Drug Court for twenty-three months, and Drug Court saved my life.
Hey, I'm John, Drug Court has taught me responsibility and a life outside of prison.
My name is Brandon, because of Drug Court, I'm gonna stay clean and sober.
Hi, I'm Justin, Drug Court taught me how to be a more structured individual and how to be a better member of society.
My name is Matthew, Drug Court helped me with my anger and to control my emotions.
So we have three participants here, they're all in varying degrees of our program. The first one is Mr. McClure, he is just starting phase two as of today. If you, if you wanna stand up and maybe just say something.
Last one is like, thank y'all for what y'all done for us, um, this Drug Court thing has really changed my life, I'm about to be able to be a father to my daughter who's about to be here, and I just wanted to give a thank y'all for everything that y'all done for us.
And we have Tori, she is in phase three, which is midway, we're a total of five phases.
I just wanted to say thank you. I have been in and out of jail majority of my daughter's life. That's all she knew was me as an addict, but I am an active role in her life, I took her to all of her little league games, I was able to register her for school. It's just really turned me into a better person, all around.
And then we have Josh, who is preparing to graduate this month.
I've been in the program twenty-seven months, and twenty-seven months I've been in the program gets the most of the sun of my life. It's like old life since I was fifteen years old. Been out of a lot of trouble, and now with Drug Court, now that I'm about to graduate, on my feet, one of the best jobs I've ever had, actually have a family. And I appreciate y'all helping, and I plan to be sober after this, after graduating. And I appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
So thank you guys, because without you guys, without your support, like, we could never do this, like, the state does grant us funds for, I mean, it's not for the full program, and without support from you guys, we could never be successful in changing lives and changing the future, so, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
That program's definitely been a, been an asset in our county, Judge, and I appreciate the work that y'all do behind the scenes, 'cause I know it's, it's more than just the nine-to-five, I mean, there's the after-hours, there's the phone calls, and the contacts, and counselors, and resources that have to be available. Seeing it from my professional side of my career path in law enforcement, there's been many that if, if went through that program, and there was a couple in that video, and one of them in the room, uh, who has his son with him, that I know personally. So it's good to see them make that change and turn their life around, and not only is it a benefit to our county, I mean, the numbers are there, you're talking about one point eight million dollars, and that's all fantastic, but for them, it's, it's a better-than-a-dollar amount, it's their family, it's registering their kids for school, seeing the birth of a child, signing them up for sports, working a great job. Those testimonies are gonna be huge, so, um, putting that money to help is, I think, a no-brainer for this board, and we're always glad, and of course, the opioid, opioid money really helped a ton, but, uh, I appreciate what y'all were doing, it means a lot, and proud of all of y'all, and so are your friends, and the ones that maybe you hung out with, they're seeing you and can see, and can see that there's a better life ahead, so hopefully they'll follow you in your footsteps, and a lot of times it takes somebody else being strong and leading the way, and y'all were doing just that, so, thank y'all.
Item number two, Sammy Robinson, Harrelson Veterans Association. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eli Alafonte. I'm a member of Harrelson County Veterans Association. I retired from the United States Army as a Lieutenant Colonel in the Infantry. I'm a Harrelson County Girl, named Lana Kimble, and that's what brought me here to Harrelson County. Been resident here for twenty-four years, and, um, like a lot of guys in the military who leave the, the military, one of the last things on your mind is to join a veterans' organization. But I got roped in by guys like Sammy Robinson, and Jim Carter, Ross Bridges, uh, David Green, and that's what got me into Harrelson County Veterans Association, I'm glad I did that. So thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation about what we do here in the county, and a great event that we're planning, which we're building right now as we speak, the West Georgia Military Museum and Education Center. This is the purpose. And I won't play PowerPoint karaoke with you, I know y'all can read real well, but just a brief discussion on the history and the mission of the Veterans Association, and to introduce the West Georgia Military Museum and Education Center. Here's the outline I'm gonna follow, the mission of our organization, uh, brief history, the museum itself, and conclusion. And the mission of the Harrelson County Veterans Association is that, we're here to preserve the history and the service of the veterans, past, present, and future of Harrelson County, and provide community service awareness and education for both the current and future generations of our great county. Brief history, first meeting, nineteen ninety-one. We're writing the history of the Harrelson County Veterans Association, it's, a lot of y'all who are volunteer organizations, normally have an organization, then you have an event. Well, this organization, it was backwards, they had the event, and they had the organization. And that event, for some of y'all back in the nineteen nineties, was the creation of the Harrelson County Military Memorial, the League Low Memorial, back in nineteen ninety-two. After that was built, then the organization was formed. And I think a lot of y'all in this room worked very hard on, on those efforts. Fourth of July celebration, we're famous for that. The Medal of Honor Park created a few years later. First funeral honor guard, and I think Sammy, but two hundred, at least two hundred, maybe more military funerals that the Harrelson County Veterans Association, uh, has performed, especially in light of the dwindling resources of the armed forces. Car Show and Barbecue, our big fundraiser, ninety-seven. Freedom Award for Freedom Is It Free, the essay contest, that we administer to the schools. The Wall of Tears in two thousand and five. The Motorcycle Run, to help provide and maintain the upkeep of our parks in Tallaposa. Five K Run. What do we do the Five K Run for? So that we provide this college scholarship program to graduating seniors from Harrelson County High School and Breaven High School, we fund those, uh, programs. Probably one of our biggest, uh, tasks, missions, was the creation of the Harrelson County High School Army ROTC unit. And we made a formal presentation, not too long ago, actually, back in two thousand and five, and that's just a great program, and those of you all who are familiar with that know that that program has helped hundreds of cadets, hundreds of young men and women, get their high school diploma, and then become, uh, great citizens of this county and this nation. Really what we're here for is to let you know about the West Georgia Military Education, Military Museum and Education Center. We're building it right now, as we speak. Right now, and it's, the location of it is, uh, right next to our League Low Park, uh, vicinity, uh, where the Harrelson County Board of Education is located at, that field directly, uh, adjacent to them. And I know it's very difficult to read our vision, we also have this on our website as well, the mission of that museum, and, and the board members. And Sammy's gonna give some details about, uh, the museum as, as it's, uh, occurring. Groundbreaking ceremony, almost two years ago, and a lot has happened. And you see some, uh, local businesses, some of y'all in this room have already donated, monetarily and in-kind, to the creation of this military museum and education center. And that's a key there, you see those young children out there? That's gonna be a very important item, because unfortunately, there's a lot of folks, uh, they don't have, relatively served in the military. But here's an opportunity to preserve the heritage of the veterans, again, past, present, and future, for those schoolchildren, and that's one big thing that we're doing, uh, for this program. We're working in conjunction with the University of West Georgia, the Center for Public History, the Department of Art, they're at the university as well. We have a professional curator, Sammy will tell you all about the, the artifacts that we have. It is a living, breathing education center, that we're providing the community. See the schoolchildren out there, uh, again, the foundation has been laid. We need sponsors, unlike the first presentation, we are asking money. We're asking your money, we're asking in-kind, what you can provide, you know, for our community. And again, this is not just the Harrelson County Veterans Association or Tallaposa, it's the West Georgia Military Museum and Education Center. We're making our pitch throughout the West Georgia area. In a couple of days, Sammy and I are going to Cedar Town, to the Exchange Club, to ask support from the citizens of West Georgia. So like the Uncle Sam slogan, we need you. No donation is too small. No in-kind service is too small, so how you can help? So if you had a grandpa, or a relative, you served honorably, well, here's your opportunity to preserve the, the history and the tradition of grandma, grandfather, uh, and any of your relatives. And all donations help us achieve that mission of creating this museum. You can give online to our website, Harrelson County Veterans Association website, and any member of the Harrelson County Veterans Association will be glad to, uh, take your money, we're a five-on-one, three-C, nineteen veterans, uh, organization, so any type of donations you give to us, we can write you an invoice for tax purposes. Conclusion. Help us preserve, uh, the history and the legacy of all the great veterans who served in this county, past, present, and future, and to ensure that the awareness of patriotism and freedoms that we could pass on to future generations. I'll be followed by Mr. Sammy Robinson.
Again, we appreciate you allowing us to come here, I know we're taking up a little time, but, you know, sometimes our veterans gave their life, so that we could be here to try to explain to you what we're trying to do in this county and throughout the West Georgia area. This is a project we started twelve years ago. As time changed, we started doing what we had to do to develop it. We looked for some property, the property was donated, as you said earlier, by the school board. This project cost us, home board and neighborhood, five hundred thousand dollars. We said this to some people, they shake their head, wanna know where you're coming up with the money. With less than a year and a half, we've got three hundred thousand dollars, with over fifty thousand dollars in kind to pay for this project. As we said, the foundation is done, the building is ordered, and it will be here in about two months. Give you a little rundown of what this is, again, this is West Georgia Military Museum and Education Center. This is Polk County, Harrelson County, Carroll County, Pauley County, and part of East Alabama. And anyone else that wants to come here, everywhere it will be done. We have, uh, you see around the edges here, there'll be rooms where you'll go back to start with the Gulf War. We'll go into World War One, World War Two, Vietnam, uh, come on in to the war between the states. We're gonna have a chapel here, you'll also have a theater, for where then you will come in and sit down as you are now, and programs will be put on, so you'll understand what's going on. There will be a TV set in every room, hanging on the wall. So when you walk in there, you will see what's going on with that particular era at that time. This is, this is one of them. And this is also a two-story building, this is just the first phase, second phase, we duplicate this with a walk-around, you should see on the bottom, so you can overlook and see what's going on downstairs. There will be a helicopter sitting in the center of this. We've also got a World War Two, uh, glider plane that we will put in. We have things stored all over this country, okay? From Polk County, down to, um, Carrollton, here in this county, and as well as McDonough, Georgia. Our curator is from McDonough, Georgia, some of you that's in the business may remember him. He was a retired fireman out of Atlanta, became a fire, and, and vestigator. He was, he was given the fire out in Oklahoma City. He is our curator, he's been with us ten years. He designed every bit of this, knows exactly where everything is going, and how it was set up. This is, uh, as, as, uh, they said earlier, these gentlemen here wasn't here for money, we all. I don't mind telling you what I'm saying, that we'll, we'll ask you for money. Anything that you can give us, uh, let me get this package here. Everything that we have done since we've been in, uh, an organization, started in nineteen eighty-eight, there's no federal or state funds, anything that we've done, anything you see what we, we built, it is your money. You've given it to us, by the way, through our pocket, and, uh, that's how this is done, and we operate. There will be a board set up, of people from all counties that direct, that will direct this museum. I wanna give you a package, that gives you a lot of information in here, that I may not, Mr. Tarson, that you may not, uh, cover here, but it will show you, tell you who we are, where we come from, and where we're going. And, uh, this is just a little bit of what we can give back, uh, to this community, and make sure that our veterans, that's given their lives for you to be here today, is never forgotten, and they'll always be remembered. And that's all we're asking. But this educational center to be tied into your school system, and, uh, the children from your school system will be able to come here to research, uh, what they need to, and you will, you'll have, they'll have a great place to go. We'll have a, a room there set aside for PTSD, uh, for veterans that need to come and discuss, and talk with somebody or other, to run to Atlanta. This is a fascinating, uh, thing that's happening here, but it can't be done without your help. And so far, everybody's been grateful, uh, to give us their money, and to give us their in-kind. So with that, I think we've taken enough, enough time and have covered it. As we said, somebody asked me the other day, said, there's gonna be a two-story building, how you gonna get from one floor to the other? We're gonna have a roping bus, when you set up this area. That'll be about elevated playing. So it's really expensive, we've got, uh, we've got sprinkler system there, because it's, uh, you make on fifteen minutes work, which you gotta have sprinkler system, that costs a lot of money. Thankful for the Sprinkle, Louis Sprinkler System out of Villa Record, that really jumped in into helping us, uh, with this, so that everything will be, uh, great. It's be one of the, uh, one of the nicest things that you'll see, this is no jump. This thing's put together right, and it's been funded, it's been funded by most of you guys there. With that, I'll get out of your way, if any of you got any questions you'd like to ask about this? It's always good, when you do a presentation like this, if nobody asks questions, that tells you that you've done a great job, and you've covered everything that they need to know. Thank you so much, I'm just all of you, and, uh, looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number three. This time, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Item number three is a request to re- Item number three is a request to rezon tax map, zero-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-zero-eight-seven, located on U.S. Highway seventy-eight. The present zoning is R-two, and proposed zoning is C-dash-GB, requested by Patrick Walters for, uh, a manufacturing location. Is there any questions or anything regarding this request?
I have none.
If not, need a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, the rezoning request, um, made by Patrick Walters for the property located out on Highway seventy-eight.
Second.
All right. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Unanimous with one, abstain?
Item number four, request to rezon tax map, zero-zero-one-seven-dash-zero-zero-one-two-V-four-five-four-six-and-four-seven. Present zoning is A-one, proposed zoning is conditional use paintball field, Brandon Harris. Anybody wanna come up to the microphone?
Can I give you guys some papers?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, uh, thank you for y'all, thank you for your information. These last couple of meetings, definitely been learning. And so, uh, I know we originally, some of the concerns were, you know, trying to use all eighty-one acres for, uh, said proposed paintball field, and you wanted some more details. So, uh, went out there, and the area we're gonna be using is eleven point four-nine-nine acres. Uh, it's the front, front side of the property. Um, as you can see in the, uh, the map that I, that I drew out, is, you know, we have driveway, um, which is gravel driveway. We have parking, and so we have entrance and exits. We have tables. The fields are mapped out. Um, we have a forty-foot container for storage, um, and, uh, needs out there at the field for air. We have, uh, bathrooms, um, such as, uh, porta-johns, uh, that will be located out there, um, for, uh, the players and customers. We're far enough off each property line to make sure that we're not disturbing the neighbors, or having issues with, uh, anything going towards the road, or anything else like that. So I know I just gave it to you. You may have a couple of questions, which is totally understandable.
Okay. Any question?
I don't.
So I guess my drawing was good?
Thank you. Anybody oppose? If I was coming from Tallapoosa, and I turned on Stedman, I cross the river.
Yes, sir.
And I, uh, come up a ways, there is a, a fairly new paved road that goes to the left, that the develop, someone has put in there. Do you know where I'm talking about? Are you further north of that, or south of that road?
We're further north.
Further north.
So as soon as you cross over, um, across the river, that is, uh, this is Stedman Road, and I think they named it Stedman Way or something like that, that.
Okay. That road, it has a cul-de-sac at the end of it.
It's got like a, a roundabout in the middle, and then a cul-de-sac down there.
Right.
And so, all of those lots are five to seven acres. Then there's another gentleman, uh, which is not here tonight. Uh, he lives over in Marietta. I've talked to him multiple times. He owns a strip of land, which is Lot forty-eight. And he owns this, that Lot forty-eight, which divides my property between all the other properties where those proposed homes are located.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it's probably half a mile from the river.
So your property lines are running east and west. You're not going back toward the river? Or are your lots going back toward the river?
My lots on the backside.
Uh-huh.
They do touch the river.
Okay.
On that backside.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm with you.
But there again, it's, total's eighty-one acres. All we're using is eleven point four-nine-nine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Give opportunity to, uh, anybody that's against. Is anybody against? Okay. We need a motion to approve or deny.
I move that we approve the rezoning request, um, out on Stedman Road. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, rezoning to, uh, show a right hand? Motion carried. Okay. Item number five, executive session. We need a motion to go into executive session for land acquisition.
I make a motion that we move into executive session, rec, reference land acquisition.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, show a right hand?